Dr. Cortina, here. Mr. Dotry?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport? Ms. Zuckerman? Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Welcome, everybody. If it's too cool in here, we'll turn the heat up so you can make believe you're outside, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right, superintendent's report, please.
So we are in the final stages of preparing for the opening of school in a couple of weeks. We will have our administrative retreats tomorrow and Thursday. Next week, we will have our new teacher orientation. We'll welcome all of our new staff. And our construction, which Kateen will speak to, is proceeding on schedule, so we are in good shape.
Okay. Kateen, I'd like to hold off the financial report and training until the end of the meeting, if you would, please. Do you have anything else at this point?
Yes, I was going to do a presentation of where we stand with the referendum.
Great, okay.
So as you know, we have three schools that are under heavy renovation, the first one being Hilldale. All three are having the same things done, the bathrooms, the gyms, and the media center. When we started with the media center, this was right after demolition. And we are beginning now to paint. You'll see the ducts are being painted. The floor will be put in. Hilldale will be the one building that is going to be delayed. We got held up in the town with the permits for the glass that is going to enclose those openings that you see in the far distance where the bookcases are. Those will be enclosed in glass, and they'll also be enclosed on the other side. Those enclosures will be done on the 7th of September, so we will start school with it open. And by that first week that they come back, it will then be closed. Here are the bathrooms and the gym when we first started. Media Center at Valley View. And the bathrooms. One of the things that we will be working on at Valley View is the putting up on those panels that went across, we're going to be putting up the padding that we had put up in Lazar. Here again is Woodmont. Woodmont's floors are now in, in their media center. And the bathrooms. And then the gym. Right now, we are on target with all three buildings. All the renovations are moving on time. The only other projects going on are the windows at the high school. We have had a difficult time. Our goal is to match the glass that would be going in those windows with the glasses in the auxiliary gym. We've been having trouble getting the color to match, so we just delayed this project. But our estimate at this point is that over Christmas break, those windows will be swapped out. And the 500 and 600 wing are getting new air conditioning at the high school. In addition to the work at the high school, we also are doing air conditioning in all of the remaining classrooms district-wide. So as we move towards that first week in September, we will be testing the air conditioning in each of the spaces in order to ensure that it is functioning properly. We have also been going through and tying in the controls. So all of the air conditioning, all of the heat will be tied into building systems. So all of that will be controlled centrally through a computerized system. In addition to the heat and the cooling, it will also include relative humidity in order to keep the humidity levels at about 60 percent. And then it will also be checking for CO2 levels. That is scheduled to be completed somewhere in the September range. So as we move forward from here, we will be seeing the completion of the bathrooms, media centers, and gyms. We will be seeing the replacement of the windows. Our original expectation was October. We're moving that to December. And then all the academic spaces by the beginning of school with the building management system coming on in September. And then we begin working, we've already started the process of beginning to work on the ESIP lighting replacements, converting all of the lights over to LED lights district-wide. And then that's phase one of ESIP, the ESIP project, including some building envelope, meaning enclosing the outside of the building tighter doors and windows and vending machines on controls. The second phase will be the rooftop units at Valley View and the solar, which will be starting up, going out, we'll be setting bid dates for that, actually next month. And then that will proceed for next summer. So we are getting to the point where we are beginning to close in on the completion of all seven buildings through phase one.
So by the opening of school on September 5th, right?
Yes.
That the only thing that might be on a delay would be the library at Hilldale?
Yes, because of the glass.
But all the other, the rest of the, Hilldale and the other two elementarys, everything will be done, the gyms and media centers and the bathrooms.
And we'll do another presentation on the 3rd at your public meeting, which will give us really nice, pretty completion pictures.
And the solar projects are going?
The solar projects are all going on roofs, is that the question? Yeah.
What building?
Pretty much all buildings. They've all been spec'd to have possible, put a panels placed on them.
So that'd be in addition to the solar panels that already exist?
Correct, that already exist, exactly.
A very good job for your staff with the architect, thank you very much, getting it done on such a timely basis. Any questions of Kateen? And we'll get a nice new pictures on September 3rd, right?
What do you think the estimate on the savings for electricity will be with the solar panels?
Oh, solar panels, that I have to get back to you. On solar alone, I don't know, just off the top of my head, but I can definitely get you that number.
Okay.
Yeah, not all the buildings have solar panels, right?
They may not all in the end have them, but they've all been spec'd, and we will be looking at the possibility of putting them on, all of them. We're trying, the way the ESIP works is you're trying to hit a certain savings number. So we're trying to reap a number in savings of electricity. Once we hit that number, then it's kind of gravy after that. So then we start to evaluate, well, maybe we don't want to put them on, I'll just pick at Valley View, because maybe there's more shading at Valley View than at other places, and it would be more difficult to place them on the roof due to avoiding the trees and the shading. That would be the next step, and we'll be figuring that out as we proceed forward.
I thought I specifically remembered a couple of years ago, somebody saying they could not put them on Woodmont.
But it's a roof roof.
No, Woodmont is one of the ones that they've evaluated as being sufficient. Keep in mind, panels have changed a lot. They're not necessarily the panels that you might have installed 10 years ago. They're much more lightweight, the ability for installation and the-
And they've also redone roofs, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, didn't Woodmont get like new toys and wrappers?
Right, and a lot of your buildings were, I don't know at what point that discussion would get, but I mean, that is another part of it. One of the discussions that we are having at the high school is there are sections of the high school roof that we'd like to then do next summer. And once those sections are done, they would be able to maintain the weight of the panels. Lazar wouldn't have been considered prior to us having redone the roof last year.
Anything else for Kateen? Thank you, Kateen. Committee reports? Have you considered?
Right, we just met before tonight's meeting, and Kateen took over the pictures, but went over the projects. And we also had briefing on the financial condition of the district, which is strong.
Thank you. Kurt, do you want to Michael?
We met last week, talking about the high school master schedule and some class size variables. We talked about the staffing issue involving certain classes at the high school. Talked about Andrew preparing documents for the upcoming Q Sac review. And he adopted the textbook for the new, not for the new, for the Lazar mandarin.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I have a question on Kurt. We discussed that really in some detail, the staffing issue yesterday. Did we find that stuff?
We have not been able to secure a technology education certified staff members, so we will, the finance department will be working to notify parents and students that have registered for some of those courses in terms of selecting alternative electives.
All right, just one more.
Yeah.
Also, at that meeting, we did have some discussion, I'd like to bring this to the board members' attention, about the issues of staffing, the difficulties of finding certified staff now for certain positions. And it was discussed, I don't remember whether it was Mike, somebody's, that it was an issue that should be brought up to other levels. Karen, you were mentioning that discussion, and you went there, to the New Jersey School Board's, where something should be done either through the state, through whatever powers it be, to sort of rattle some cages and get some action on being able-
I read the minutes, Mike, and I actually made a copy of them, and I have a couple of meetings lined up in September, and I'll bring it up.
Okay, and if members of the board could assist you or something in some way, or I don't know how.
Oh, I'll catch you.
I'm sure Karen can carry it all. Thank you, Michael. Policy, John?
We haven't met.
Communications down?
Haven't met.
Safety is Kurt, John?
But I will say, I'm sorry, can I just go after Communications? We haven't met, but I want to thank Renee for, and the whole central office, for the introduction of the new website. It's coming along nice, it's good. So thank you.
Our delegates, John?
So there's a couple of meetings that I'll be attending in September in my role as the Vice President of Legislation. There's an executive committee meeting on the 12th, and maybe I'll bring up the issue of staffing at that meeting if it would seem appropriate. I'll also be attending the legislative committee meeting on the 14th, and that's a meeting that I'll be chairing. And there's a board director meeting on the 27th, so I'll come back with reports from those meetings.
The meeting you'll be chairing, what day of the week is that?
That's the Ledge Committee. It's September 14th, Saturday.
Thank you. Michael, Morris County?
Well, they haven't, what is the date of the first meeting in the fall, I'm sorry?
For Morris County?
Yeah.
I do have one tonight.
Is it in September?
I believe so, hold on.
Because I don't remember receiving any.
I don't think they've published it yet, Mike, but-
Okay, I don't know if it's coming.
Definitely it's coming. It's the 19th of September.
Thank you.
That's the Morris County one?
Yeah.
They got the memo on Morris County, right, Mike? Dan?
No.
Educational Services, John?
The Regional Day and Park Lake have finally combined, and they're selling one building.
Regional Day combined?
With Park Lake.
Yeah, there's only one school now, right?
Yeah, it has about 45 students right now.
Drug awareness, Mike?
Haven't met.
Mustangs, Michael?
No meetings till September.
PTC's, Karen?
I don't mean, I don't know when the next one will be.
Hilldale, anybody there? I think I had mentioned before that we're going to make a change on this. Michelle Zuckerman no longer has a youngster at the middle school, so she'll become the PTC liaison for the high school. Mike, that's one less meeting you have to go to the high school. And at the middle school, I think you were going to move up there, right, Dave?
Sure.
To the middle school? To then we're looking for a liaison to Hilldale. So if you can have any volunteers, if not, I'll assign a volunteer, okay? So give it some thought. You can leave it empty right now for next week. Participation, public participation, this is an opportunity if you have any questions on the agenda items. If not, we have an opportunity at the end of the meeting on non-agenda items. Nothing?
Nothing.
May I have a motion on the agenda, please? Second. Moved by Palmer, seconded by Morella. July 16th, Board meeting. Comments? Item J?
Yeah, Kurt, let me ask this question, it should be an easy question. Does Michelle Sullivan sign for Woodmont? You're talking about the one that's on Conner Road or the one that's right next to the school by front door?
The one that's in front of the school.
By the front door?
On Woodmont.
You mean on Conner Road?
No, Michelle Sullivan, what are you talking about?
No, it says purchasing a new sign in front of Woodmont School, just-
It's the main, it's the one right in front of, no, it's not the one on the road. I think they're doing a little try and sign for that. I think it's the one.
Want to just walk up to the kids, go in?
Yes, that's what I think. I'm not 100% positive, but I do, yeah, there's no way we're buying with a sign that's going to be fungible, $1,100.
And I'm just quite true, yes.
Some of the bulletin boards are signs in front of the schools. I know I still go by one or two schools and it says school closed on 20th or something. I'm sure they're updating them for the opening of the school in a couple of weeks, so. Item J? K? Financial? L? Wellness? And there's a lot of them with all those sub-crees in reality, and spite pens, page effect page. Professional days, item M. I know that you, your secretary had indicated anybody going to the conference to let her know by the 25th, so if anybody's going to the school board conference in October, please let a man in Kateen's office so they can make the necessary reservations and get board approval. And I don't think we have anything on policy.
Yeah.
All right, roll call, please, Mr. Sun.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Obstain on NHS and everything else.
Dr. Cortina? Yes, except abstain on L dot five, number nine. Mr. Dotry?
Yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Hi.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. No need for a closed session? Any old business before the board presentation? Our next meeting is September 3rd.
I would like to just comment on Dr. Rotar's action plans for the district goals, in particular of goal area number four, the mindfulness. I'm really happy that the action plans are, include addressing homework. I really appreciate that. The idea of the survey, I think, is going to be appreciated by the parents. The, you know, asking the question will kind of impact the homework. Does homework have, survey's going to be reviewed and recommendations looked at. So I just wanted to say thank you. I think it's something parents were looking for, and thank you for the information.
Under all business also, in the committee meeting tonight, Mr. Sun indicated the auditors are here, and we should be expecting a report, the October meeting?
I'm hoping.
As long as the state doesn't help us out, okay? And any general board, well, before I, general board comments? I know Kateen still has a part. All right, public participation, anybody from the board? All right, last item we'll have in the board term. And when we did the self-evaluation, several board members indicated that they'd like some additional training in the financial reports that are submitted monthly by the business administrator. So we'll be here till at least 11:30, 12 o'clock, or we can, or we can spread it out over a period of meetings, which I think would be a little bit more productive. And Kateen, if you can start with the first section of the board secretary's report, and I'll let her go at this point.
When we go through the process in January through April of planning the budget, we have a lot of discussions and a lot of detail as to all the different things we want to include in the budget, and how we break it down, and how the state presents it. And then after we get done with that process, that's sort of the last time we ever have conversations about how the money is actually being spent. And the board secretary's report is the document that explains that process every single month, how we go from the point of formulating the budget all the way through to the capra that Mr. Grau discussed that the auditors would be presenting in October. And so the idea over the next six months or so is to take that process of going from the budget that we put together in such great detail, and how does that actually get quantified in a reporting fashion that you get to see grow over time, till we get to the conclusion, which is the capra, which reports on everything that actually happened during that particular school year. The report you have in front of you is the June 30th board secretary's report. This is the final that we're closing with. This is the document that went to the auditors this week as our final numbers. This is the document that will produce the capra that we will present in October, hopefully. So what this shows you is a completed year. And what I'm going to do is we're going to walk through certain pages of this that would relate to how did I go from what I approved almost two years ago as part of a budget to where I am today? So what we're going to do is we're going to flip around a little bit, and the first page we're going to go and look at is page six. If you look at the report up in the right-hand, upper right-hand corner, there are numbers, and we're going to go to page six. Page six identifies your revenue stream. So if you think back to the budget, we always talk about the fact that the two sides have to agree. The revenues and resources available to the Board of Education that come in have to be adequate enough to cover the expenditures and dispersments that are going out. And that balancing process is quantified in actual transactions through the board secretary's report. And page six shows the resources that were collected by the board during the 1819 school year to fund all the expenditures. As you can see from that report, the very first column is called your estimated amount, and that was what was in the budget. If you went back to the budget documents where we met in April of not this past year, but the year before, and you were to pull up your paperwork from that meeting, what you'll notice is all those numbers in that very first column are the same numbers that showed up in the presentation that we did.
So that's the 1819 budget?
That's the 1819 budget. We quantify resources in three categories. Local resources, the largest being tax base. State resources, which are your state aid amounts, inclusive of extraordinary aid. And federal resources, which in our case, because of our size and we have participation in the semi-program, is the reimbursement on Medicaid for students who actually meet the requirements. Collectively, our intention was to raise $74.2 million in estimated revenues. And in actual revenues, the column next to that column in the middle, we raised $72.9. We were actually shy a little bit by $63,000.
$72.9?
Seventy, I'm sorry, $74.2, sorry, I did that transposition. What the report is showing you is that numbers that are, that show in the parentheses mean we actually got more than we expected. So on students participating in our pre-K program at Valley View, we actually paid tuition to go and be, to come to that program as regular ed students. We actually had more students than what we anticipated by about 30,000. Numbers that are positive on that report show that we fell short. We didn't collect as much as we had anticipated. So for example, we had anticipated that we were going to bring more students in from other school districts to come attend our programs. We did not bring in as many as we planned, and so we ended up short in that particular account by 51,000. And you can go through each of the different revenue streams to actually see where did we come out from what we thought we were going to be back April two years ago and where we are right now.
What does LEA stand for?
Local Education Agency? It's like another-
Another school district.
Yeah, that's backwards, by the way.
It is, it is backwards, I know.
It's like transit's supposed to be a loss.
Yes, and in, and in, when we go to the expenditure report, it flips the other way.
Yeah, that's-
So yes, I agree, that is confusing, that's why I'm saying-
But that's why it's important for you to know how these reports are laid out, so that you know that it's actually-
In the case of extraordinary aid, we had planned on 1.6 million. We were a little above that, 1.625, so that shows us a parentheses, meaning we were above. And we had put no money towards other state aids. That 59,000 that shows as other state aids is money that we received from the state related to the reimbursements for aid in lieu of. That was actually the only, I think, time when the state made a mandate and they actually paid for it. State mandates, they pay, it only happened once. So that is how the original budget gets translated into the actual in that comparison. Now, if you were to look at this particular snapshot at different points in time during the year, these numbers would be shifting and moving, and the comparison would maybe not be fully fulfilled. For example, in miscellaneous, miscellaneous, a lot of times that number is running short, and it's running short throughout the year because that's a cash-only kind of account. We wait till we get the money, there are no receivables that are established for those amounts because we don't really know what we're going to get before we get it. And so that number-
The first column will never change.
The first column never changes. The middle column and the third column are constantly shifting as we move through the year.
And the unrealize is just another way of-
The difference.
The difference.
The difference in what we did not receive. Now, if you go to page seven, the very next page, what that page begins with is that starts the expenditure side, and it's broken out just like we break it out when we do the budget presentation. So whenever we do the budget presentation, we group things in instructional, the events that affect the kids directly in the classroom, then we do support services, then we do administration, then we do capital and building. And that's exactly the way this report lays out. The very first section is your regular education programs. It shows the amount that we budgeted for the teachers, the very first column, the amount that we spent, any amount that's encumbered, and then the amount that is available that we just didn't use at all. On this report, it's more intuitive. The positive numbers mean we didn't spend the money. The negative numbers meant that we went over what we planned on spending. The difference between expenditures, which is the second column, and encumbrances. Encumbrances are the promise by the board to make a payment to someone. It is generated generally by a contract or by a purchase order signed by myself on your behalf. So every time we issue a purchase order, we make an encumbrance, a promise to pay to the vendor to fulfill the order. As the order comes in, and we've proven that, yes, they've met all the requirements, that this particular pencil is exactly the pencil I wanted to buy, and I am happy I received it and all that, and I sign off and say, yes, okay then, they produced what we had originally ordered. It shifts when the bills list is created from the encumbrance column to the expenditure line. So everything that shows up on a bills list is in the expenditure column. Anything prior to being on a bills list is in the encumbrance.
And that includes contracts, teachers.
And that would include contracts, particularly contracts that we pay over a period of payments.
For teachers and staff.
Yes, exactly. So if you were to look at this particular report, let's say in September, the encumbrance number would be almost the entire balance of these because we haven't paid anybody yet, and there'd be almost nothing in the expense columns. At this point in time, when we're at the end of the year and we've made all of the expenses, the numbers are all sitting in the expense column, and there's very little left in the encumbrance column.
And now, does the total balance take into account the expenditures and encumbrances?
Yes.
And it tells you how much you are either short or above?
Correct.
And it tells you how much you are, you know, short or above as the year progresses?
Correct, exactly.
You wanted me to remind Renee, I mean, Kateen, during the year, there's transfers.
Oh, I was just going to get to that, that was my next thing.
I reminded you to.
And what will happen is as we, now, the way the system works is you guys are deciding almost two years in advance what this budget is going to look like. And as, none of us have a crystal balls, things happen that we could never possibly have known were going to happen when the actual moment comes to making a purchase and therefore it requires us to do transfers. So what happens when every meeting you approve a transfer report? And when a situation occurs where we are going to be short when I sign a purchase order and make or sign a contract for a commitment, then we will then issue a transfer to move money from an area that we don't expect to spend the full amount on, to move the money into an area to cover that particular agreement. And that way then, when you look at these reports, 99.9% of the time, you'll never see a negative because we've already taken care of covering them through the transfer report we're also giving to you at the exact same time. And so the only time it happens is if Diane and I, our eyes are failing and we just miss it, but basically you never see them. So when you look at this report as the report for the end of the 18, 19 year, all the balances that you see in those available columns are the amounts that we did not spend. And those accumulate all the way through, if you flip to page 13, 14, you will see the total for that fund, for the general operating fund, the fund that we created the budget for two years ago, that is the summary. We planned on spending $77 million, we ended up spending shy of that, and then the funds available are 2.6.
And that includes, that includes deduction for the encumbrance?
Yes. The only encumbrance opened at the end of the year is a project that Austin was working on over the summer to do clocks and alarms at Lazar because there were many spaces in Lazar in which the clocks or the alarms were not working properly for notification safety reasons. And we issued a purchase order right in June for that work to be done during July. Now, because no work had been actually done when June 30th came, it remains as an encumbrance and gets carried into the next year until the work is completed. And then at that point.
Then that figure on page.
Yes, yep, yep, yep. And it's just one purchase order.
That's pretty good.
So as we had.
You think you should stop now?
Yes, I am. This is all I was going to do.
If everyone can absorb so far what you've done, what the minuses should be pluses and the pluses should be, I mean, I think once you get the September report or the August report.
Yes, we'll keep moving.
It's a little easier to look at rather than have all the zeros. It's okay for the end of the year, but once you look at the one without all the zeros, then you'll see, like, you encumber money for the teacher salaries and social security and all that other junk, and then you'll see how it draws down. But I think that's enough for tonight because we don't want to.
And next, so that, because I, you know, I want the anticipation to grow for the next time.
Oh, it'll grow.
We will be discussing balance sheet accounts.
Oh, yes.
We were worried about that, so I wanted to put it in.
You promised.
I promise, we will talk balance sheet accounts. I know, accounting is a very exciting thing.
You're not going to test us, are you?
No, I never test.
Thank you very much. But I think that, once you work with it, it's not as difficult as it might seem first time through. Unfortunately, I've dealt with a many, more than anybody here. The only thing that changes is the numbers. Okay, anything else for the Goodwell for Michael?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment something off from what I see in tonight in the approvals and so on. Often as we approve people for the staff and so on, I see names of people who were students at Monville High School. And it's always a good feeling to see some of them. And of course, sometimes you don't see them because the names have, you know, but that's always a positive thing, to feel that they want to come back and be part of the place where they went to school. I think it says something. And in keeping with that, I just, I don't know if you all know, there's been a lot in the news lately about New York City and things going on and Commissioner Lee's, it's been on TV a lot in a few days, and he is one of our graduates, in case anybody didn't know.
Really?
Yeah, Commissioner Lee Suton O'Neill is a graduate of Monville High School and he's in the Monville National High School whole thing. So as you saw him on TV, unless, yesterday, he was one of our, I was very proud to listen to him, unless.
Very nice.
We have graduate sitting at this table.
The other thing on the agenda that I've been impressed with, so many of our teachers are now changing training levels, going from bachelor to master, semester to master plus thirty, or whatever it is, and that's where I encourage these teachers are taking advantage of our tuition plan and getting to that college level, and I encourage them to keep doing that, that's very important. All right, if there's nothing else for the Goodwell for, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.